I now call the Huntsville City Council Meeting to order. If all they were like to or unable to, please rise for the invocation led by Shoba Baat, followed by the Pledge Allegiance led by John Oshewski.
I was born and brought up in a Hindu household. Hinduism was not founded by any one person. It's an ancient way of life and way of thinking that evolved over thousands of years. Huntsville is home for a diverse group of people. We are grateful for the diversity because it enriches our lives. We pray for the wisdom to know that all inhabitants of planet Earth are members of one big family. We are grateful to the supreme force that created us and brought us here together. We pray that those assembled here will make the choices that bring us a bright future of better understandings, equality, and inclusiveness. It is my honor to offer the invocation at today's city council meeting. I will say a very brief prayer in Sanskrit, which I will then translate to English. (Singing) Asatoma sadgamaya, tamasoma jotergamaya, mruhtyorma amritangamaya, om shanti, shanti, shantihi. Lead us from the unreal to the real, from darkness to light, from mortality to immortality. Let there be peace, peace, peace.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the invocation and thank you for the Pledge Allegiance. The minutes from the July 10th meeting have been received and they'll stand approved. There's no objections. We're now at resolutions, special recognitions, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask that Greg Patterson, our Director of Parks and Recreation, come forward. We have some awards for some young people who have done some special things out in community, especially in the sporting fields. Coach?
Thank you, Mayor, and it's my honors for the Mayor and the Council to recognize one individual tonight and also one team. So we'll start out with the individual first with Morgan Wall. Please come forward. Morgan is just graduated Huntsville High School and she was named 6A All-State in softball. And congratulations to you for an outstanding year. And I think she said she didn't really want to say anything. She's going to school at Auburn this fall and had a great career there and we want to congratulate you on your efforts.
Thank you.[195.34][195.34](Applause).
And Morgan, we're going to be playing a game against Association of the U.S. Army Group on next Friday and we need a ringer with us, so we may be calling you.
All right. Next, I'd like to call up Coach Mike Good from Madison Academy Mustangs. They won the Class 3A Baseball Championship this year. In the last six years, they have been the state champion twice and the runner-up twice. So four times in the last six years, they have played for the state championship. So Madison Academy visiting these council meetings has become a habit. We may get you your own parking lot out here because of the other sports as well as baseball have done out extremely well. So Mike, at this time, I know it's difficult to get your entire team together in the middle of July, but the ones that are here, we'd like to hear about them.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. I'd like Dr. Kirkland to join me up here on the podium and on stage. As some of you know in the community, Dr. Burton, who'd been our president for the last 20 years, retired and Dr. Kirkland is assuming his duty as the new president of Madison Academy, so we want to welcome him to Huntsville. Thank you.[277.83][277.83](Applause). All right. I also wanted to recognize some of my coaches that are with me here tonight. Gary Mays is out there in the audience, one of my assistant coaches, and David Wessinger is here with me also. And then I have a few players that I'd like to introduce and bring them forward. And guys, when you come forward, if you would just proceed down and shake the hands of the individual people up here on the podium and the city council members, I would greatly appreciate it. Bo McLaughlin. Bo is a graduating senior. He'll be attending Alabama A&amp;M University and he'll be playing baseball out there for the Bulldogs. Bo was the MVP of the Class 3A State Championship Series. Did a great job batting leadoff for us. Emerson Brooks.
Good job. Good job.
Emerson is our starting center fielder, two-sport athlete at Madison Academy, football and baseball. Had an outstanding playoff run, just played extremely well, and defensively, we couldn't have a better center fielder. Justin McCagren. Justin is one of our backup catchers. His best days are ahead of him in a Mustang uniform, but we really like what he's able to contribute to the team. Lucas Mordecai. Lucas had a big save in the semifinal series against Piedmont and we look for great things from him, first baseman, and will probably move into the starting rotation next year. Taylor Clemmons.
Congratulations.
Taylor was number one in our rotation this past year, put a record together of 11-1, was named Super All-State. Okay. Robert Lambden. Robert's a rising senior in our program, outfielder, served in a pinch-hitting capacity this year, but his best days in a Mustang uniform are yet to come. Jake Christa. Jake also had a big save in the semifinal series and also had a save in the State Championship Series. Played a great defensive first baseman for us and hit .363 down the stretch through the playoffs. And Cole Tomlinson. Cole was a backup catcher in the program this year. He gets a chance to get on the field next year, but he was part of our playoff run. Okay, a couple of things I wanted to also state. Our All-State Class 3A recipients, first team was Greg Lambert. He's not here tonight. He's playing in Nashville. Blake Coward was named honorable mention along with Bo McLaughlin. And then our All-Tennessee Valley Championship Series teams, which goes across all classifications, 1A through 6A. Jake Christa was named starting first baseman. Will Acuff was named our starting second baseman, then Bo McLaughlin, who we've mentioned before, and then Greg Lambert was named first-team pitcher. So we are very, very fortunate. A lot of things fell into place for us to put together a championship season and look forward to being back here next year, hopefully. So, thank you very much.[487.78][487.78](Applause). And let me also say, I've got some complimentary passes for the city council as well as you, Mayor Battle. We'd like to see you at our home football opener on August 22nd. It'll be Madison Academy versus Leeds, and that's the rematch of the State 3A Class Championship game from last year. So it should be an exciting time, and if you're not able to attend, it'll be shown on ESPN.
Congratulations.[522.25][522.25](Applause).
Thank you.
Coach, you got anything else? That's it. All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Congratulations.
Coach, if that would be a good time to leave, if y'all want to leave.[551.16][551.16](Laughter) But you're welcome to stay.[554.04][554.04](Laughter). We have a resolution recognizing of the Draper Memorial Church of God in Christ 2014 Scholarship Award Banquet to be held at the Holiday Inn Research Park on August 2nd, 2014.
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Dr. showers?
Mr. President, I will be presenting this resolution on Saturday, August 2nd, on behalf of the council and the mayor.
Thank you, sir. B is a resolution congratulating Mr. and Mrs. Richard Carter upon their 50th wedding anniversary, be held at Grill 29 in the Village of Providence on July 29, 2014.
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Dr. showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Culver and I will be presenting this resolve on July 29th on behalf of the council and the mayor.
Thank you, sir. C is a resolution congratulating Dr. Joe Mack Bankhead upon his 22nd pastoral anniversary of the Friendly Temple C-O-G-I-C Church, be held on July 27, 2014.
Move to approve. Second?
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Dr. showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the Church of God in Christ Church. Dr. Bankhead, Joe Mack will be honored for his service. We will be presenting a resolution to this occasion on behalf of the mayor and the council.
Thank you, sir. Under announcement tonight, 14A, the administration has asked, so we consider that by unanimous consent and vote on it tonight. 15-Nancy Nancy has been deleted. We have no business with outside legal representation. We do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution for suspension of licensure for UTSAV LLC. Mr. Taylor?
Council members, this is an item that I've explained to you on a regular basis. I don't have to go through the entire process, but it does involve a request concerning the payment of taxes. I have described for you the process that we go through when the city believes additional taxes are due. In this particular case, there is an agreement between the taxpayer and the city on that amount, but given some circumstances associated with it, we've requested the suspension to enforce an agreement that has been arrived at and the taxpayer has been compliant with, but it is our interest to protect the honoring of that agreement by way of this action. So the taxpayer may be here, but we have reached an amiable agreement and the taxpayer is complying with it. It's just a request to be able to enforce that agreement.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the Public Wish to Address Council on this particular item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-318, amending Article 74, non-conforming lots, non-conforming uses of land, non-conforming structures, and non-conforming uses of structures and premises by deleting the existing section 74.1, non-conforming lots of record, and adding a new section 74.1, non-conforming lots of record and unified lots. This was postponed from the June 26, 2014 regular council meeting and was originally set at the May 8, 2014 regular council meeting. Ms. Lotto?
Yes, Lisa Lotto, Planning Division. The planning staff, upon further review and discussion, feels that there needs to be additional clarification and changes to the language of this ordinance. In the best interest of all, we request that the city council not consider this proposed ordinance at this time, and we request that the ordinance be returned to the Planning Commission and that we begin the legal process again.
Thank you. Does anyone from the Public Wish to Address Council on this particular item? Public hearing is closed. The chair moves to send this back to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Discussion. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-402, rezoning property lying on the east side of Quality Circle and north of Governor's West from Research Park Applications District to Research Park Commercial District. This was set June 12, 2014, the regular council meeting. Ma'am?
Ashley Nichols, Planning Division. The property is approximately 10 acres. This property is located on the east side of Quality Circle and north of Governor's West. The current zoning for this property is Research Park Applications. The proposed rezoning request is for Research Park Commercial, which is consistent with the adjacent zoning.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Does anyone from the Public Wish to Address Council on this particular item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Dr. showers, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-404, zoning new annexed property lying on the south side of Olmsted Road and west of Taylor Road to Residence 1A District. This was set June 12, 2014, the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This property is 1.36 acres of newly annexed land. It's located on the south side of Olmsted Road and west of Taylor Road. It's currently a single-family detached dwelling and the proposed zoning is R1A, which is consistent with the surrounding zoning.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Does anyone from the Public Wish to Address Council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance number 14-406, zoning newly annexed property lying on the east side of U.S. Highway 431 South and on the north side of Caldwell Lane to Highway Business C4 District. This was set June 12, 2014, the regular council meeting. Ms. Nichols?
This property is 17.19 acres of newly annexed land. It's located on the east side of U.S. Highway 431 and on the north side of Caldwell Lane. This property is currently vacant and for proposed commercial development, and the proposed zoning is C4, Highway Business C4.
Thank you. Does anyone from the Public Wish to Address Council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing City Clerk Treasurer to assess the cost of cutting and removing of grass and weeds against certain properties. Mr. Benyon?
Yes, this resolution identifies 59 properties that were in violation of the city's grass and weed ordinance. These properties are identified on attachment A by the owner and location. The owners received written notification by regular mail that they were in violation of our ordinance and were given 14 days to correct the violation. All 59 owners failed to respond and Community Development issued work orders to cut these properties at a total cost of $13,470.80 and an average cost of $228.32. Attachment A also identifies the date and cost for cutting these properties. The owners received a written request by regular mail for payment and they failed to respond, so I'm requesting that property assessments be placed on these properties in order to collect our costs. The owners were notified of this proposed action and could wish to speak tonight.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the Public Wish to Address Council on this issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by the chair. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing City Clerk Treasurer to assess the cost of demolishing the property located at 1512 McCurry Street Northwest. Mr. Benyon?
The property identified in this resolution was previously declared unsafe and authorized for demolition. The resolution authorized for the assessment of cost of demolition and removal of debris from the property listed. Attachment A identifies the owner, the date that Community Development took action, and the cost for demolition and removal of debris from the property. The total cost was $2,414. The owner received a written request for payment and failed to respond, so I'm requesting that assessment be placed on the property to collect our costs. The owner was notified of this proposed action and may wish to speak.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the Public Wish to Address Council on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
So, second.
Motion by Mr. Culver, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing City Clerk Treasurer to assess the cost of demolishing the property located at 613 Kenan Road Northwest. Mr. Benyon?
The property identified in this resolution was previously declared unsafe and authorized for demolition. The resolution authorized for the assessment of cost of demolition and removal of debris for the property listed. Attachment A identifies the owner, the date that Community Development took action, and the cost for demolition and removal of debris from the property. The cost was $15,034.21. The owner received a written request for payment and failed to respond, so I'm requesting that assessment be placed on this property to collect our costs. The owner may wish to speak.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the Public Wish to Address Council on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by the chair. Discussion. Mr. Benyon, why did this cost $15,000 and the other house cost $2,000? Just larger house?
The other one was just the slab that was left from the previous house. This was a full house and it was a hoarding situation and there was debris from all through the house and from the backyard to the back property line.
Thank you. Further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at Communications from the public. When I call your name, you have three minutes to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record. Mr. Jerry Cox.
Jerry Cox, 4029 Telstar Circle. Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, as a veteran of the United States Army, I am very pleased to report to the public tonight that according to the three sources that I have, there were zero deaths in combat in Afghanistan during the three-week period ending last Saturday. That is the first time I've been able to report that. Counsel, I have been a member of the Huntsville Chapter of Retired Federal Employees for over 20 years, with 14 of those years as either president or a vice president of the chapter. I have been tasked to present a resolution to the council tonight. Ms. Stamper has the copies for each of you. I will read the resolution. Whereas the retirees of the city of Huntsville, Alabama provided the citizens of Huntsville good and faithful service during their long years of employment with the city. And whereas today, the general welfare of the retirees of the city of Huntsville is under great stress in that they have not had a cost of living or a COLA in eight years. And whereas the Alabama Legislature has authorized the city to fund a one-time bonus for its retirees based upon length of credible service at a rate of $24 a year times years of service. And whereas the Huntsville North Chapter 443 of the National Active and Retired Federal Employees and the third-largest chapter in the United States and celebrating its 60th anniversary in Huntsville this month, does fully support these city retirees in their effort to secure this one-time bonus. And therefore, be it resolved that the Huntsville North Chapter 443 calls upon the city council of Huntsville, Alabama to take timely action to approve and fund this bonus for its retirees in appreciation of their efforts that made Huntsville the city it is today. Approved by the members of Huntsville North Chapter 443 at its membership meeting held in Huntsville, Alabama on the 12th day of July, 2014, and signed by its president, Cheryl Patterson. Again, I remind the council, this is not a resolution from the board, but from the membership of the chapter. Finally, I recommend that all persons running for office this summer or this fall read, if you haven't already, the opinion in last Sunday's Huntsville Times entitled "The Long Term Unvoter." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Louis Sitrano?
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Sam Sitrano, Jr., and this is my brother Louis Sitrano, and we are here tonight as...
Dr. sorry to interrupt you. We need your address for the record, please.
My address?
Your address.
Home address?
Yes.
Okay. Can I write it down? I prefer not to give it out on the...
Well, that's what we ask you to do, is write it down on the sign-up sheet, but you didn't, so I need it for the record.
Okay. Well, I'll sign it. I'll write it afterwards. Okay. I prefer not to give it out publicly. That's fine. Why don't you come up here and write it?
And sign it. Thank you, sir. If you'll start over, please.
Sure. Well, tonight, we're here as concerned Huntsville citizens to bring the council up to date about a house at 706 Ward Avenue. I'm going to give you a little brief history about the house. Some of you may be aware of, others may not.
And sir, I apologize to stop you again. Is this under a current lawsuit right now? Have you filed a lawsuit against the city of Huntsville?
I have not.
Is...
Here speaking as a concerned Huntsville citizen, sir.
Okay. Hold on one second, Ms. Case, is that okay? I believe there's a lawsuit against the city on this issue?
We can listen to what he has to say, but I don't know if we can necessarily...
Okay. Go ahead then, sir.
Okay. This house was placed on the market in 2007, and in January 2010, the house was struck by a tornado in which a large tree fell on the rear of the house, through the roof, into the kitchen, bathroom, and bedroom, severely damaging the house and knocking it off its foundation, according to the insurance company, which they totaled it. The homeowners were given the option to repair or demolish through notification of Community Development. And however, the homeowners had to go before the Historical Board first in order to repair or demolish this. They chose to demolish. They've been before the Historical Board, I understand, I think, five times and been denied five times. But the reason we're here tonight is concerning the amount of tax dollars, yours and mine, that is being spent to defend this case. This should have been an open-and-shut case with the Historical Board four and a half years ago. I would also like to point out that there've been many homes demolished in the historical area that have been livable, never hit by a tornado. You're well aware of two prominent cases the city had to defend with the Historical Board, but yet they had to settle, but not before enormous amount of tax dollars were spent. It seems to me if the city has a surplus amount of money to spend on meaningless cases like this, they should spend the money to benefit the citizens of Huntsville, road repairs, education, and other projects. So that's what we have to say tonight.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Ms. Kling?
These gentlemen met with me and...
Ms. Kling, keep in mind, this is a...
Yeah, I understand. I'm not talking about anything litigation. I'm just talking about as a council member, and I don't know anything about the litigation. These gentlemen did come to meet with me, but one, a couple of things that did kind of pique my interest, and I'm thinking more as an issue. They had a document that they had received from the City Community Development Department concerning their property. And if the Community Development Department gives somebody a document wanting action taken on their property, I think they're supposed to take that action, or I would have that concern. So I just, I wanted to raise that concern. And also, and again, I'm staying away from legal things since he cut me off, but they claimed that their block got included in a historic district that was against their will and that the majority of the people in their block were opposed. And I know we've had annexations that have been somewhat parallel to this, and of course I realize we're talking about a historic district, but I would raise the question about, similar to the way we've had annexations come in and then smaller pieces that would de-annexate, de-annex out, I wonder if these folks need to look at that. According to what they told me, everybody on their block was opposed to being in this historic district, and you know, is there a mechanism where that individual block that they're on can de-annex out, similar to the way we've had de-annexations from, I think, around the Ditto Landing or South Huntsville area? Two questions I just wanted to kind of raise that I was kind of piqued about, and again, I'm trying to stay out of all this other litigation stuff, but I think those are issues that somebody needs to look into. I would not want to defy the Community Development Department. Mr. Benyon's a good man, but he's very, you know, he's very diligent in what he does in the neighborhoods, and they received the notice from the Community Development Department.
in the neighborhoods, and they received the notice from the Community Development Department. That's all I know.
Okay.
But like I said, the only thing we're concerned as citizens is the amount of tax dollars being spent, and I think the city needs to look into that.
Okay. And are you the only one that just want to speak for all three Sitranos?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Battle, President Russell. My name is Tom Dozier, one-two-three Windsor Hill Road, Huntsville, Alabama. I'm here representing the retirees of the city of Huntsville, and we're here tonight requesting, begging, pleading, deceiving, whatever, for the one-time bonus that the Alabama Legislature has granted unto the cities, and we request that you consider that very positively. I represent not only the retirees who have worked for this city for thirty, thirty-five, forty, forty-five years, but I represent employees that worked on the back of garbage trucks for thirty years. I met Mr. Bud Robinson several years ago in my backyard during a hot July day when he was working with a tree cutter, cutting one of my trees down that had been hit by lightning. I went out and gave him some water, and I said, "Bud, what are you doing out here?" He said, "Mr. Tom, I can't make it. I draw seven hundred and twenty dollars a month from retirement. I get three hundred and sixty dollars of Social Security," and he said, "I just don't have enough at the end of the month to know whether to pay my rent," because he didn't own a house, he couldn't afford it, "whether to pay my utilities, or whether to pay my drug bill for my wife, she's been sick." I talked to Jesse, one of the custodians of this building, who for over thirty-five years worked by the side of Lily Bell as she went about these floors and these buildings, cleaning them, cleaning the restrooms, and taking out our trash, and she said to me, "Wednesday morning, Mr. Tom, can we go?" I said, "Mr. Jesse, I don't know. We're going to try. We're really going to try." Gentlemen, your retirees are in a bind. They need help. And this is just a one-time thing. I'm not speaking so much for myself and my wife and, because we're going to make it, but I am speaking for those who are struggling, and you have, and we have, a lot of retirees out here struggling. And I'm not kidding when I say at the end of the month, they have to make some terrible determinations as to whether they pay their rent, whether they pay their utilities and not have them cut off, or whether they pay their drug bill. This is not something that we just very arbitrarily ask for. We haven't had anything for over eight years. They haven't had anything for over eight years. And gentlemen, we need some help. As I said in the beginning, we're asking, we're begging, and we're pleading, that you look wherever you need to look and pull in the funds for this one-time bonus. Jerry said the rest of it. We stand ready to answer any questions you might have, and I thank you for the time that you've afforded your retirees to address you tonight for this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. James D. Foster? Mr. Foster, will you give your address for the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. President, to the council, to the mayor, other distinguished members of the district. My name is James D. Foster, sixty-five eighteen Mercator Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, three-five-eight-one-zero. If you're not familiar, that's in North Huntsville. My concern tonight is to bring some awareness to you and look for an opportunity for some form of enforcement. And I'm talking about enforcement of the ordinance that we have on record that deals with debris from grass cutters in the streets, cut grass from businesses and residents where they leave it in the streets. And I'm concerned because this behavior appears to be on the increase. In fact, on my way over here tonight, on my own route, Winchester, there was a church with grass thrown in the street. I come around the curb, there's an insurance company with grass thrown on the street, and that is too busy for anybody to be out there blowing it, so I know it's going to be left, okay? Now, that's the primary thing. What I'm looking for is some form of increased awareness and some form of enforcement. I've spoken to the Green Team, they have ways to report it, but once again, enforcement is something that's missing. So I'm hoping that we can get this taken care of because we promote our city as a city of clean, what? Industries. And if you're going to have dirty streets, you're sending mixed messages, and that just doesn't work, okay? Keep that in mind. The second thing I want to talk about is accidents on the highway around the city. When accidents occurs and the cars have to be picked up by wreckers, the wreckers come, pick up the cars, pick up the heavy pieces and put them on the wrecker, but that glass and the mels and stuff, they sweep it to the curb, and the officers who are in there taking care of the traffic never get a chance to notice that. Well, it's not important until an emergency vehicle is coming down the street and you have to get over on that side where all this stuff is left, and then after you pull off, you then have to take your car to some tire dealer to get a tire or two tires because that stuff cuts up your tires, okay? So all I'm asking is that we put a little bit more awareness on accident scenes to make sure that the patrolman makes sure that the person picking up the vehicle also clean up all the trash and don't sweep it to the curb. I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hamilton, who can help Mr. Foster with his first issue with the grass?
I'll meet with him, and we'll figure out where we deal with the issue.
Okay. Mr. Foster, will you meet with Mr. Hamilton after the meeting or something? Thank you. Ms. Jackie Reed?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for public input. First, I want to congratulate and thank Mark Russell for a good job that he's done over the years. He didn't have any opposition in the city election for two thousand and fourteen, and I think it's a great and an honor. We're proud of you. To me, that's a great honor, not to have any opposition, have to run up for reelection. So you've obviously done a good job. You have, in my opinion, and I don't brag on many people. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyway, I want to thank Joey McGee and the Mayor Tommy Battle for the crepe mural sitting out in front of City Hall. It's a blooming. I thought it was going to die, but it's a blooming. I want to thank them for the crepe mural. I want to wish my daughter, Deborah, a happy birthday today. I know she was going to wonder if I was coming to the city council. I always said my family can't die on a Thursday night. I didn't know that somebody could have a birthday on a council meeting night. But I want to wish Deborah a happy, happy birthday. She's as beautiful on the inside as she is on the outside. She takes care of the family, she's always there, and she cares about everything she does. One good thing, I have never heard her say anything about all my running near the elections. Mom, you don't need to do that anymore. She's always been supportive. If that's what I want to do, she's right behind me, so that means a lot. I wish that she'd be a whole lot older than I am. We're both the same age tonight, though, thirty-nine and holding, holding on. I want to know, I know you had a big party last Thursday night downtown. Thousands of people showed up, and I know you took in a lot of tax dollars, Mayor, and I'd like to see if you put a four percent raise in for the city employees and some for the retirees, because when you have these kind of parties, you got to make plenty of money, and that's what I'd like to look for. I also heard today, I hear in my work, more stuff that's going on. I heard the Duck Bridge is out. Now, these are outside engineers, these are not your employees that are talking to me. They was in a meeting somewhere and said the Duck Bridge, a million dollars, is back on the agenda. Wait a minute, for a million dollars. Are we going to bring that Mayor Loretta Spencer's Duck Bridge back on Church Street? I think you need to have a work session and talk about some of this. I just do. And then I also heard about the Coca-Cola plant, it's going to be for mixed use, same meeting. I don't know what you're going to do. I keep asking, are you all involved in the Coca-Cola plant? I never get any answers. Maybe you can answer this one. Who's going to build that parking garage for Bridge Street out there, that new parking garage that's going to be built? Who's going to pay for that? Does anybody have any ideas of who's paying for what anymore? Anyway, I appreciate you. I've got my eyes on Holmes Avenue over here, and when you get that Holmes Avenue Bridge built, I would like to have city employees and all of my help, that can help homeless people, get all that grass away from over there on Holmes Avenue. I've been preaching about for twenty years. We need to get in and get all them trees and that grass away from that railroad track. My time is up.
Yes, ma'am.
I love you and have a good weekend.
And I think, well, I think you're excused to go to the birthday party right now. Mr. Dwight Wright?
Dwight Wright, two thousand and five Kildare Street. Good evening. "For Good Cause." "For Good Cause." These three words are what kept us from being able to reach an agreement on the fence that is needed to ensure the survival of Kildare, a property that has been described as the most important Victorian mansion remaining in the state. These three words determine if it continues to remain. A year ago, all of you were able to identify good cause to allow me to build a fence in the right-of-way. As you have heard from me, my neighbors, and as is evidenced by the hundred-and-seventy-plus police reports, the good cause for the fence still exists today and is even more relevant. Since the reasons to have a fence in the right-of-way were and still are so easily recognizable, why would any of you hesitate to include language in the agreement that would require some reason to be stated for its removal? The language would not prevent the removal of the fence if a problem or need was determined, it would simply require it to be stated. Do you really find that to be an unreasonable request? Why would you not, why would you want the power or ever have the need to revoke an agreement without good cause? Would you personally be willing to make an investment under circumstances? I cannot help but think that we might have another case of miscommunication here. It seems to have happened over and over again concerning this matter. For example, at the last meeting, when three of you voted to revoke the agreement, I learned that it was I that broke off negotiations with the city. However, it was my understanding that no more negotiations or discussions were possible. When I was presented with the modifications to the agreement, I was told this is it. I could accept it or the license would be revoked. I would have welcomed the opportunity to try to continue to reach a solution that would support the survival of Kildare, and I appreciate the effort that Mr. Culvert made to try to make that happen. I still believe that if we could have a discussion with all the decision-makers present, we could reach a reasonable solution, and tonight, I respectfully ask that you work with me to find a way to save Kildare. I have been told that since the news of the fate of Kildare has been made known, there has been much public outcry and concern for what might happen. The citizens of Huntsville have identified a good cause, the survival of Kildare. I ask that you join them and not let the absence of these three words lead to the loss of Kildare. For good cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Delilah Van Landingham?
Good evening. I'm Delilah Van Landingham. I live at two thousand and five Kildare Street. In the light of the fact that both the mayor and Dr. Showers were absent the last city council meeting when you, Mr. President, joined Bill Kling and John Oshewski in voting to revoke the licensing agreement that the entire council passed a year ago this month, I'd like to know where they respectively stand on this issue. For decades, we've all heard Dr. Showers advocate for economic development in North Huntsville, and while technically Kildare falls in your district, Mr. Russell, it actually lies in North Huntsville, which everyone knows begins at Oakwood Avenue, and given that North Huntsville arguably does not have as many historic landmarks as other parts of the city, and not to mention the fact that Kildare's second owner, Virginia McCormick, was a major benefactress to A&amp;M University at a time in our history which made her generosity extraordinary, to say the least, and in many circles downright controversial. One would therefore naturally assume that Dr. Showers, as well as Mr. Culver, who, by the way, abstained from voting, would have particular interest in the fate of Kildare. So for the record, Mr. President, I'd like to know how Dr. Showers would have voted had he been able to have been here. And now, looking back on that vote, as it occurs to me that since a major bone of contention in this issue are those water meters, and since Mr. Oshewski has a direct influence concerning them, I wonder why did he not recuse himself, as he usually does when there's even so much as a hint of a conflict of interest? And lastly, Mr. President, since this vote was taken in the absence of the mayor, I'd like to hear his position on this issue. I'd like to know if he approves of the way this has been handled, the way we've been dealt with, and if he feels that the manner of treatment rises to his standard of fairness, transparency, good faith, and good government. I would invite the mayor and everyone else to visit a brand-new website launched just this afternoon at kildaramansion.com, where Dwight tells me you'll see the beginning outline of this story with updates posted daily. This is our last hope, that a clear picture of this situation will inspire the mayor to intercede and work with us fairly to reach a permanent agreement and solution to this problem that does not result in the demolition of the Kildare Mansion. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
Could I comment on this issue?
Sure.
And I don't think I'm stretching it too far when I say that based upon what I've seen up here with carrying it over and carrying it over and negotiations and everything, I think everybody up here, you know, loves historic preservation, and we want to see the historic Kildare Mansion to continue and thrive. The city, I think, was being very generous because normally, and legal folks, Sissy, correct me if I'm wrong, but normally, we very, very, very rarely allow any building construction on a right-of-way, but because of the nature of this great mansion, a great resource, I grew up in this city, we were working to try to come up with a way where there could be construction. The city's not adversarial to y'all. All we're trying to do is protect the interests of the taxpayers, city liability and everything, because if somebody is in a car wreck injured because they hit the fence that's on the city right-of-way, we're the ones that face the liability. There were two options, and I mentioned at the last meeting, the guidelines, and I know there's a lot of time and negotiation and everything, but basically, what I could see, and I was not part of the inside negotiation, but the mayor and his staff, Mr. Russell, were all working to try to make a special exception, a special allowance, so that the fence could be built on the city right-of-way, which I would have a hard time thinking about another time that the city's actually allowed that type of disposition. And what we said at the end of the meeting was that there are two options that are available within that, I think it was like a sixty-day period. Number one, you know, comply with the guidelines that the city had put out with. We're not against y'all. We're trying to make a concession or allowance for you, and at the same time, protect the interests of the taxpayers. But, you know, build the fence on the term, the guidelines that the city comes up with, or there's Plan B, which is when you would come in further off the city right-of-way and on your own property where you could do it. But personally, in everything I've seen behind the scenes, everybody up here would like to see, we want to see the Kildare House, you know, continue and thrive and become a great resource. All we're trying to do is protect the interests of the taxpayers. We're not against, but just trying to come up with reasonable guidelines under a very special circumstance, a very special, you know, situation where we can make a special allowance for you to build on the right-of-way. Everything I've seen up here, and I'm comfortable with it over the last several months, this thing's been carried over, Mr. Russell, for, I believe, well over two months. I know you've been very much involved, and, you know, you and I don't agree on every issue, but I think this is one where I've seen you really go to bat trying to, you know, to work to preserve the house, and I support it, and I think everybody here on the council, what I've seen behind the scenes, is in support of the continuation of, the thriving, let me say, of the Kildare House.
Thank you, Ms. Kling. Does anyone else want to comment?
I'll comment. Mr. President, you know, our staff has worked, and it's been more than two months, months and months, on this issue. Most assuredly, everybody in the city of Huntsville would like to see the Kildare House thrive, become, be the historical value that it can be, be the historical home that it can be. It is a historical home in our area, but, you know, tying the idea that that historical home has to have a fifteen-foot fence in front of it does not causally link to the preservation of the home. The people who own the home have to have a dedication to keeping that home, to keeping it historically sound, to keeping the historical factors in that house that can really be part of that house, to make it a historical structure. And putting a fifteen-foot fence up, and for us as a governing body, to put the people of Huntsville, to have them have the liability of something that could happen if that fifteen-foot fence comes over, which is made by six-by-six and lots of boards, you know, I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Huntsville to- you know, I don't think it's fair to the citizens of Huntsville to say you have to take on that liability for that. Love to have the historic house saved. Love to have that historic house be part of our culture and our city. We think that it is a great asset for our city, but I don't see why it has to have a fifteen-foot fence in front of it to be saved. And I think that's been the conversation that we have been having for, gosh, the past four months, is it, Ms. Cates? And trying to come to something that is, that is, that works. The rights have a full right to put up a fence there on their property, behind the setback lines. And they have, they can put that fence up anywhere they want to, on their property, behind the setback lines. But once you start putting it on the right-of-way, we have some liability that, you know, that becomes the citizens of Huntsville's liability. And that liability that becomes the citizen Huntsville liability is something that we, as stewards of the Citizens Trust, have to watch out for. I wish you luck with the house. I hope that the house stays a historic functioning house for a long time. But I don't tie a fifteen-foot fence to the idea that it can be a historical structure. A fifteen-foot fence does not make it a historical structure.
Anyone else wish to comment?
Mr. President, I would be remiss if I would not address, before two thousand and twelve, that was in my district. After the twelve election, that part of our city went into District Two. It was asked how I would have responded if I would have been here at the last council meeting. Let me tell you what my response is tonight. I support history, preservation. The House, historically, has been in my district, and I continue to support the House. However, I would, that we spend some more time on how we might make it work without a fifteen-foot fence. I think all of us know here tonight up here, that's been the sticking point. I think everybody supports up here. I do. And I would ask that those that are concerned about the future of the House, be prepared to come back to the table and talk about how we might resolve the height difference at that location.
Thank you. Now, board appointments?
Mr. President, just before you go to board appointments, Mr. Foster raised two items earlier. One was with the grass debris that a lot of businesses and homeowners, when they cut their grass leaves in the street. And the other item significantly is that when there are accidents, and Mr. Foster, your point's well taken. There is debris that is left on the street, side of the street. Some of the companies do have shovels and brooms, and they pick up, but some don't. And so, Mr. Hamilton, I'm going to ask if you would contact the appropriate department, division that deals with our touring, our pickup, our impounds, our accidents, and see if we could put some more teeth into those who pick up cars that have been in accidents and fenders and glass and other parts of the vehicle are left on the side, sometimes still in the street. And if you, if you would do that, and as you get with Mr. Foster, if you would share with the council also what we're going to do with that. I know we got a contract coming up soon. I know it's in legal and with the department, and that will be a good time before we submit it to the council to make that a part of whatever's being presented. Thank you.
Thank you. We have board appointments to be voted on. One is a resolution to reappoint Joyce Griffin to the museum board of the city of Huntsville for a term to expire August thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kling, second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to reappoint Betty Shonrock to the Von Braun Center Board of Control for a term to expire August twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Ms. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to reappoint David Nass to the museum board of the city of Huntsville for a term to expire August thirteenth, two thousand twenty. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a nomination of John Burbach for the appointment to the Downtown Redevelopment Authority for a term to expire July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty. Are there other nominations?
Yes, I move that Willie Love would be reappointed to the Human Relations Commission Committee.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing nine ten A is a resolution authorized expenditure for payment. Mr. Kling?
President, move for payment of vouchers in the amount of nine million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars and four cents.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Mr. Kling, do you have a finance committee report?
No, Mr. President.
Mayor Battle?
Mr. President, for the record, I'd like to reappoint Tammy Jordan to the Housing Authority of the city of Huntsville for a four-year term to expire August fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. And we have had a phenomenal job done by our animal control. Mr. Hamilton still here? I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hamilton on the work that he's done with animal control. This past couple of weeks, it's been gotten very hot, and the word went out through the news media, Ms. Doyle, thank you for your article, that we were having some animals that were being distressed because of the heat. And because of the heat, we were, had a, had a big chance of losing a lot of those animals. After the article went out and after the animal control put their feelers out to everybody in the community, we are now down to about forty animals left at animal control right now. And they were, the rest have been either adopted out, or some of them have been somewhat rented out, but they are all throughout the community right now, and this community responded and responded great. So we want to tell the community, thank you for doing the job that you've done. You've helped make it a lot easier, and to our folks in animal control, you've done a great job. Thank you for stepping up and really working hard to make sure that we can take care of these animals. Also, this past week, if you missed Concert in the Parks, you missed a great event. We had hundreds and hundreds of people down in the park. This Saturday, the Council of PTAs meets. I can't believe it's time for school to get started again, but Council of PTAs meeting meets this Saturday, and they talk about what the PTAs are going to be doing in the school this year. This is a dedicated group of moms and dads and parents and grandparents and people just have an interest in the school system who come out to work with our school system to make it a better school system. And I want to say thank you to each of those who do this and spend their Saturdays out trying to make us have better school systems and a better education system. Westlong Butler and University Place will have their Community Day this Saturday from nine to one at Westlong on Ninth Avenue, and this is, this on Saturday, the twenty-sixth. Also, Armed Forces Week starts the following week, August third through August ninth. And we'll have lots of events. We'll have Concert in the Parks and lots of events honoring our armed forces and all that they do for us in this community. Over the last, last five or six days, we've had the Holiday Insight. We've had four proposals, which we have spent about an hour and a half to two hours on each proposal on the Holiday Insight. Some great proposals from some great development teams from throughout the southeast, and I think that we've made some real progress on that. We're still four to six weeks out to being able to start to negotiate out a final, a final, final agreement on that and get started. Most of those proposals that we've talked about are talking about finishing up construction end of sixteen, early seventeen time period. And they're, they're all very, very good mixed-use developments, which would be an enhancement to our area around the park. Also, I think I just saw on our media that our Redstone Chapter of AUSA, which is Association of U.S. Army, was again named Chapter of the Year, which is probably almost the tenth year in a row that they've been named Chapter of the Year. And congratulations to them. Their relationships with the, with Redstone Arsenal and with the Army and with the active Army that is here in this town does not go unnoticed. That's one of the things that people say time and time again when we go to places like the Farmer Air Show and we talk to businesses. They said, "Your businesses support the armed forces so well, and your businesses are also partners with your government. That makes a difference, and that's the difference." And that's the reason that we get the SES announcements of four hundred and fifty jobs and jobs and the GE Intelligent Platform announcements of a hundred and twenty jobs and the Northrop Grumman announcement of eighty jobs, or the Boeing announcement of the Center of Engineering Excellence of four hundred jobs, or the Remington announcement of two thousand jobs. That's the reason that this community does well, because we partner well, and we team, and we work together. So to the Redstone Chapter of AUSA, I say, congratulations one more time. You've got a great legacy of awards that really come home to, come home to roost, especially when we have winner AUSA located here for the second year in a row this next year, and congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually wanted to address the gentleman who were here, Mr. Dozier, I believe, and Mr. Dooney, but they may have left. Everything that Mr. Dozier said as it relates to our retirees, I'm hearing those same things. And there are employees who have given their life to the city of Huntsville who have retired in a drawing, you know, six, seven, eight hundred dollars a month. Although they retired years ago, they certainly deserve whatever the city of Huntsville can do for them. And again, Mayor, I'm certainly looking to at least introduce an ordinance that will allow us to give them that bonus, that twenty-four dollars per year times the number of years they've worked, or two dollars per month they have worked. I think that is the least that we can do. On a different note, I did notice that the inmate labor crews and supervisors were out. Speaking of a beautiful city, they clean North Parkway and South Memorial Parkway, John. They clean I-565, and I'm always happy to see. And again, to the public, that's free labor that we get from our inmates who are supervised by city of Huntsville employees, inmate labor supervisors. I have also been getting a lot of emails as it relates to the abortion clinic possible move into District Five. I will be holding a town hall meeting as soon as I can work out some of the specificities as it relates to location, dates, and times. But I will say, the purpose of this meeting is not to discuss issues that have already been regulated by law, i.e., whether we're going to allow abortion clinic or not, whether abortion should be legal or not. We are not addressing any of those concerns. What we're looking at is whether or not it is the best use of a facility to have that kind of entity in proximity to schools, namely Ed White and Highlands Elementary. So I'm going to invite the pro-life, the pro-choice. I'm going to invite our legal department. I know that we can no longer have public hearings on that matter because it's already been held and litigated. I believe that happened back in the nineties. And while there's nothing we can do as a mayor and council to stop that, I, I do want to try to appeal to the owners' conscience as it relates to location. That's my biggest concern, is the location. So I'll certainly get back with the general public. We will also invite the owners of that business to come out as well at a town hall meeting so we can discuss everything surrounding that. So for all of you who have sent emails to me that I haven't responded to simply because I can't, my box is full, I do want you to know that I'm reading them and hearing what you have to say. I believe that is all that I have, Mr. President. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank all the folks who came out to my town meeting Monday night. It was a small turnout, but we lacked in numbers. We sure had in quality. And special appreciation to all the department heads that have kind of followed up on those requests and items that came out of the meeting from the, from the citizens that were in attendance. Up, before our next meeting, we'll have our Citywide Community Watch National Night Out at John Hunt Park. And I just want to kind of commend the police department, especially for the great work they do working with the community watch chapters and the CROs. We are now up to over a hundred and eighty chapters of community watch throughout the entire city. And, you know, do the math, and you can figure out the tens of thousands of volunteer man-hours that each of these chapters is contributing to the city to make us safer. And it's just a great partnership. And Chief, I really appreciate the great job the police department does working with them because we have a great relationship and good lines of communication. And that's been a great partnership, similar to what the mayor was talking about as far as, you know, partnership with the city. Another partnership that I just want to kind of wave a flag about and express congratulations. Couple months ago, there was a meeting with the School Superintendent Dr. Wodenski and about six neighborhood civic associations concerning, in the aftermath, the rezonings or actions that take place, the fact that they're going to be closed schools, and then the concerns that the respective neighborhoods expressed, and I expressed about, you know, the impact of the closed school on the neighborhoods. Dr. Wodenski heard. We had a very positive discussion at that meeting, and he has been working very diligently to bring good, good outcomes to those empty buildings. And there was a great announcement that took place very recently, where West Huntsville Elementary School, which was recently sold, is going to become a startup for innovative businesses. And I've heard people in the neighborhood refer to it as Hudson Alpha Junior. And the people in the Low Mill neighborhood are very excited and very, very appreciative of the good work that the school board and superintendent have done to bring a neighborhood-friendly outcome to that empty school building. And knock on wood, I know that there's some efforts that have been going on on several fronts with Stone Middle School and also with the Butler High School building. And hopefully, you know, those efforts will continue, and there will be some good, good announcements that'll take place in the future. But thanks, because I think the neighborhoods are appreciative of the fact that attention and concern is being given to empty school buildings and trying to find good outcomes so that those, will help those neighborhoods continue to grow and move in the positive directions. Mr. President, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm delighted to announce that on last evening at Union Chapel Missionary Baptist Church, we had the Community Unity Meeting. Very well attended. One of our media sources indicated that there was about two hundred people there. That was incorrect. There was close to fifteen hundred people that attended that meeting at Union Chapel, where Reverend Dr. O'Wendell Davis was the host pastor for the meeting. Dr. Julius Aris Scruggs was the unity speaker, and he talked about love and mercy. There are three things, he said last night, that we ought to do justly. last night, that we ought to do justly, love mercifully and walk ambitly with God. And he climaxed his message with goat, that not just North Huntsville, but South Huntsville, that we all should come together for the common cause for this great city. There were tasks, opportunities presented to those who were present. We had a number of people who signed up for the various tasks that we're going to be dealing with as we move forward. Our mayor was present there last night at the meeting, stayed the full time. And of course, we invited others, and of course, we were delighted with the support that we received on last evening. Mr. President, I want to just read here the five areas that we had people who were interested in working in this unity effort. Number one was education, social justice, crime prevention, economic empowerment, political awareness, and of course, finally, the family. At the end, there was an opportunity that the people gave to support a fund, a community defense fund. These funds will be used to make sure that we're going to fund the necessary legal representation. And of course, we were delighted with the response from that. And of course, we will continue to communicate to the public our position, our needs as it relates to where we're moving this city and school board in the City of Huntsville. We all know that the judge that's been appointed and the mediator are all looking at an opportunity to show transparency as discussions are being done on how we might get the zone lines and how we might approach soon. The opportunity to show Huntsville as having one school system, unitary status. And of course, the judge has outlined how that mediation is going to go. And I do want to say to the public, it may appear based on the articles that the judges have submitted to the public that a lot of the discussions will be held close to those who are part of the mediation team. But yet, the opportunity to know what's going on will be made available. I'm delighted that Ginny Robinson is here again tonight. She's been attending most of the council meetings, and just wanted to acknowledge her. I will be this weekend busy. Got several resolutions that I will be presenting. As you heard earlier from the beginning of our meeting, and I won't redo those, but I will encourage the council members, mayor, others, there will be a ribbon cutting at the Rocket City Credit Union on Tuesday at 2,200 Clinton Avenue at 10 o'clock. You all are invited to attend that ribbon cutting of the Rocket City Credit Union. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Oshewski?
First of all, Jerry, thanks for doing what you always do. It was a great update. Finally hear the zero number, so I appreciate what you said there. Chief, I want to make sure you know that I appreciate everything that, and please pass it on, and I can give them a call too, but I think they like hearing it from you as well. The great work Cory and his team have done down there on the street I was having all the problems with, with speeding and stuff. And, I mean, they've done quite phenomenal on that. And then Richard Kramer's guys are helping me out with some stuff on that as well, so I appreciate that help. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say this tonight. We have a planning commission member, one of the best volunteers I can imagine that's worked for our community for as long as I've been here, eight, nine years, has been a sounding board for me, has had coffee with me sometimes once a quarter, 6:30 in the morning, and just tells me what her gut feelings on things, is Sharon Tyson, who's, her and her husband Johnny are moving to Arizona. I ain't figured that one out yet, but they're moving to Arizona. Why would you want to move to Arizona? You want to live in Huntsville. But nevertheless, she should be greatly missed. And she was a hard charger, behind the scenes, just straight-up volunteer, and it didn't get any better than Sharon Tyson. So, I just want to say that publicly. I've said it to her privately. I've said it on Planning Commission. I've done it everywhere, but I needed to do it tonight, that she's a superstar and we'll greatly miss her. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Showers?
Chief Morris, is he here? No, you don't have to come down. I just want to thank you for the support you gave us last night, officers on the street, officers at the function. We just want to say thank you for providing that opportunity for service. Everything went well. Traffic was controlled. A lot of people were there. A lot of cars were in the parking lot, but you had personnel there to take care of that, and I want to say thank you on behalf of the Unity Committee.
Now, at 13, unfinished business items for action. 13A is ordinance number 14-494 for the annexation of land on the east side of Mooresville Road and on the north side of Huntsville Browns Ferry Road. This was introduced July 10, 2014, the regular council meeting. Dr. Showers moves for approval. The chair seconds. Ms. Nichols, could you explain this, please?
This property is approximately .69 acres. It's located on the east side of Mooresville Road and on the north side of Huntsville Browns Ferry Road. It's currently vacant land, and the proposed future use is commercial development. The petitioner is requesting annexation for city services.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 14A is an ordinance to amend section 22.14 Conference and Travel of ordinance number 04315 Personal Policies and Procedures Manual. The chair moves for yes consent to consider this item tonight.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mr. Culver, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. We have yes consent. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Mr. Thomas, could you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. This is just an amendment to our conference and travel policy in the personal policy and procedures manual. Many times, we have to update our policies with regards to state and federal laws, especially with IRS laws, and that's what it is, just an update.
Thank you. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at 15. Please notify the chair if any of you would like to hold. The chair would hold 15K, 15S, and 15T.
Okay, I want to hold 15Q. Did you say you're holding 15R?
No.
I want to hold that item.
Okay.
15K and 15S.
15K is held, 15S is held.
Okay.
So, right now, we have 15K, 15Q, 15R, 15S, and 15T have been held. Are there any others?
15A is a resolution authorizing mayor to ex-agreement with Alabama Emergency Management Agency for the grant number 3ICL. B is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute an agreement with Alabama State Law Enforcement Agency for Emergency Management Performance Grant. C is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one irrigation technician and to fill at a higher rate than minimum if necessary. D is a resolution authorizing city attorney to settle the workers' comp claim of Philip Cooper. E is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a partial release of restricting covenants between the City of Huntsville and the Land Trust of North Alabama, Inc., for property on Chapman Mound necessary for the Highway 72 East widening project. F is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute an environmental covenant for the former Chrysler Accusar site at 103 Wind Drive to facilitate the sale of said property at Calhoun Community College. G is a resolution authorizing the Huntsville and Madison County Railroad Authority to borrow 125,000 from First Commercial Bank. H is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Law Enforcement Traffic Safety Division for the 2014-2015 Madison-Morgan County Strategic Counter Drug Team Grant. I is a request for authorization to fill vacant public safety dispatcher positions provided for authorized strength. J is ordinance to amend budget orders number 13-630 by change of appropriate funding for various departments and funds. L is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement with the low bidders meeting investigations outlining summary of bids for acceptance. M is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter stormwater detention facilities maintenance agreement with Hillis, Inc., for Clarkson Square Apartments. N is a resolution authorizing mayor to stormwater detention facilities maintenance agreement with Workforce Housing, LLC, for Legacy Hill Apartments. O is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement with S&amp;M, Inc., for environmental consulting services for sockwell ditch improvements, project number 6514DM34. P is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement with Barge Wagner Sumner and Cannon, Inc., for engineering services for EPW, connectors corridor study, project number 6514RD09. U is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and New Futures, Inc., for their homeless children tutoring and mentoring program. V is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Harris Home for Children, Inc., for their basic and crisis program. W is a resolution authorizing mayor to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and National Children's Advocacy Center, Inc., for their child abuse intervention program. X is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank letter credit number 362000821618 for Sanders Hill and McMullen Cove subdivision. Y is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank letter credit number 362000821659 for Oakshire and McMullen Cove subdivision. Z is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank letter credit number 362000505931R for Carriage Stage Phase 1 subdivision. Double A is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank letter credit number 362000821579 for Old Cove and McMullen Cove subdivision. Double B is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank letter credit number 362000821611 for Villages and McMullen Cove subdivision. Double C is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank letter credit number 362000812633 for Ken Thurston and McMullen Cove subdivision. Double D is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank letter credit number 362000821661 for McMullen Place 2 at McMullen Cove subdivision. Double E is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Service First Bank letter credit number 12020 for Valley Brook subdivision. Double F is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bryant Bank letter credit number 1121 for Iredell Phase 1 subdivision. Double G is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Service First Bank letter credit number 13780 for Hawks Ridge Estates. Double H is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bryant Bank letter credit number 1151 for Oak Grove at Farley Farm Phase 1 subdivision. Double I is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank letter credit number 362000821655 for Sotheby at McMullen Cove subdivision. Double J is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank letter credit number 362000821657 for McMullen Place at McMullen Cove subdivision. Double K is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank letter credit number 362000821647 for Braywick and McMullen Cove subdivision. Double L is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank letter credit number 362000821641 for Abby Glenn and McMullen Cove subdivision. Double M is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer invoke National Bank of Commerce letter credit number 400512200 for Watercrest Phase 3. The chair moves for consolidation approval of 15A through 15J, 15L through P, 15U through 15MM. Second by Mr. Kling. All those in favor, consolidation approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 15K is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a purchase contract with the city's underwriters in connection with the sale of general obligation refunding warrant series 2014A, general obligation public safety facility refunding warrant series 2014B, and general obligation school refunding warrant series 2014C in amount not to exceed 90 million, subject to ratification approval by the city council prior to issuance of the warrants.
Move to approve. Second?
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Taylor, could you explain this, please?
Council members, this is a follow-up to an item we've reported to you a couple of times before about a potential refinancing of debt that would provide, of course, savings to the city. We've been watching it for a number of months, and we're now prepared to actually try to sell that debt and then bring to you a proposal to approve the issuance of the warrants. This item tonight, and I'll give you the details in just a moment, but this item you would be familiar with from prior deals. Because of the way in which the markets work, whenever we go into the market and obtain pricing and arrange an agreement with our underwriters, you are authorizing the mayor to approve that agreement with the underwriters, but you have to ratify it later. That allows some of the technical aspects of actually pricing that and making the agreement that the underwriters work. But the city council does have final approval. We won't be borrowing any money until you approve it in a regular council meeting. So, because there's three weeks between now and the next council meeting, we do expect to be in the market pricing that if conditions remain as they are right now before the next council meeting. We think it'll actually be the week of that council meeting, and so you would authorize the mayor to sign the agreement, and then we would come to you on a Thursday night and say, "Here's the agreement. Here's the deal for the city. Do you approve?" That's the way we've done all of them in the past. And concerning the nature of this deal, you read off a long list of series. There are three components to this issue that we are planning. Some of the debt is the cities that we've issued for the capital improvement plan over a number of years. Some of the debt was actually issued by the Public Building Authority for the construction expansion of the Public Safety Center. That debt is actually issued by the Public Building Authority. And the city has to make a lease payment to the authority to make sure that the debt service payments are made. The circumstances are such now where it makes economic sense for the city to replace some of that debt with debt of its own. And so, about $17 million is eligible for that kind of treatment. The interest rate savings are substantial, between 6% and 7% on that because it's easier for the city to borrow money and therefore less costly than it is for the Public Building Authority. So, and also rates have dropped since we issued the PVA debt. So, one component, the B component, respects that part. And then C is a refunding of part of the City of Huntsville school debt that the city has issued for school building and expansion. And so, and we are isolating those because of the different purposes I just described. Overall, as of the current interest rates, we think that about 3.5 million in savings will be made available to the city by lowering our interest rate, and about 500,000 will be available in savings to the school board, all of which would be reductions in their future debt service. So, that's about a 5.7% savings rate. Our policy requires that we save at least 4%. So, right now, rates are good in that regard, and so we're proceeding, assuming that they're going to hold there. And even if they move a little bit and we lose some savings, it still makes economic sense because of that 5.7% I just described. So, we're using the same syndicate of underwriters we've used in the past. There are four members of that syndicate, and we will, we've already approached the rating agencies and made our request for a rating to them. That was by way of telephone conferences a couple of weeks ago, and so we're waiting to hear about that, and of course, y'all will be the first to hear the results of it. So, it's simply a refinancing. We're not borrowing any new money for any new projects, just to reduce our debt service costs because of lower interest rates.
Can you explain the line "not to exceed 90 million"?
Yes, sir. I meant to do that. Good question. Right now, the amount of money we expect to borrow is about 72 million, and that will refinance about $70 million worth of debt. The 90 million is in there because if rates, for example, were to drop further in the next week to two weeks when we're in the market, then other amounts of debt may become economical to refinance as well. So, we think 90 million is the ceiling. Two weeks ago, it was 50, but because of rates today, it's about 70. So, we just need a little bit of room because the mayor can't sign an agreement for more than what you're authorizing him tonight.
So, if you can find more debt that meets the 4% guideline, then you'll refinance it?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Further discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Showers?
The, back to the not to exceed 90 million, the new projects that the board are in today, the new schools, one in the south, one in the... are in today, the new schools, one in the south, one in the north, are those dollars built in there to assist in that?
No, councilman, they're not. The city has borrowed money twice in recent years to fund the expansion of the building program that is currently taking place. That was all new money. We borrowed the money and gave it to the schools. Last year, it was about eighty million dollars that was provided to them in the fall of two thousand thirteen. So, this is simply reducing the interest rate on money that's been borrowed for the school system in the past. It will reduce the amount of six-and-a-half mil school tax that must be used to pay the debt service by about five-hundred thousand dollars, but it won't add any additional money to their building program.
So, that was a presentation last week about the New Johnson High School and the McNair School. On the east side of that acreage is a ditch, and the engineer who was presenting the information, it was noted that there was no inclusion of putting a walking bridge for students to cross that ditch at that particular point where his footprint's gonna be. Who will be responsible for coming up with the capital money to take care of the bridge that we're gonna need to have crossed the ditch?
That would be the Board of Education, councilman. We borrow money on behalf of the school board when we're requested to do that. We borrowed as much as could be borrowed, frankly, last year to fund the program. I'm not privy to the details, the current details of their capital plan and how they've allocated all of that money, but none of what we're doing right now would necessarily be relevant to that.
Well, I would hope that, I know our Board member is here, and I don't want to put it on the spot, but I, I hope that, Mr. President, that monies will be made available to accommodate the need on the east side of the McNair-Jemison site, and safety, and I heard you quoted that it's a board responsibility, but I hope we'll deal with that site just like we did it with the other sites. If we can assist in that, certainly, I hope the opportunity will be there, that we won't have children going out in ditches to go to school. And I only mention that because on the east side, if we don't do that, then children that live in that neighborhood gotta go all the way down Lou Mary to Winchester Road to Pulaski Pike to come up to the school, when they could go across the ditch and save all that travel opportunity. I know the school board members is well aware of that, and I hope I'm not jumping the gun, Jeannie, but I, I don't want to jump the mare either to say that it's gonna be worked out.
And Doc Showers, we're discussing refinancing right now. Let's keep your range to the subject.
That's, that's, that's in the financing.
Do you have any?
I don't think.
Okay. Further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kling.
Randy, when we do these types of refinancing that you're talking about, is it a safe assumption to say that the rating agencies would look at it as being, we're being good stewards with the taxpayers' money because we're saving money by doing that?
Yes, sir. Anybody should come to that conclusion. We're gonna save a significant percentage of the outstanding principal, almost six percent, and it'll be about four million dollars. So, yes, sir.
Thank you. Further discussion? Call for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, carries. Q is a resolution authorizing a purchase agreement between the City of Huntsville and Green Mountain Volunteer Fire Department, Inc. for the purchase of real property. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Doc Showers, second by Mr. Oshesky. Chief McFarland, could you explain this, please?
Yes, I could. Thank you. What this is, is an agreement where we're purchasing the property that's being utilized now by Green Mountain Volunteer Fire Department. As many of you know, Green Mountain, on the top of Green Mountain is in the City of Huntsville, but back into the early seventies or late sixties, we've had a volunteer fire department up there that's done a great job, and we've worked in conjunction with them to come up with a plan to help protect the area better. And this is what they're using currently now. Geographically, at some point, we will put a completely manned station up there, and this geographical, this property is geographically in the correct place at that time. It also allows us, by going up there now, to, if we need to, to man it. We won't be manning it right now, but for example, in the wintertime, if we have an ice storm, we have concerns of being able to get trucks up the mountain, personnel. We can actually staff the station when we need to. So, we're basically buying the property so that we will have it, but we're also looking to lease it back to them, so they continue to operate now, so we're all working together on that.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the chief?
I don't have any questions. This is just something that's needed to happen a long time ago, and I appreciate all the effort you've done on this. The story that he's talking about never happened before, i.e. bad weather, they know it's coming, and they're getting, they're getting people up there now instead of trying to trace it up when the weather's already happened. And it was great this year because we had bad weather, and I appreciate all your, everything you've done on that, chief, and I'm praying that in the future, as we go down the road, there'll be a real, honest-to-God, full-fledged place up there with the greatest volunteers you can possibly have, as the gentleman's here tonight, and I appreciate him being there, and get after it. So, this is a good news story.
Great. Further discussion?
What's the cost of this transaction?
Councilman Showers, I believe it's a hundred-and-five thousand dollars, I believe. Am I correcting that?
Now, once this is done and approved, the volunteer site, in the future, would that become a site that the city will have a unit up there?
At some point, yes, sir, it would. What we have up there now, as far as manning, we have a volunteer, the station itself only holds the trucks. There's not even any restroom facilities or anything else in that station. It's just strictly like a garage that holds the trucks. And the volunteer department up there, I'll have to say, had the wisdom to buy the house when it came up for sale next door to it, which gives us the ability to house people and have facilities up there. So, we could house people temporarily up there. My vision, probably, long-term in the future, is that would probably be renovated and come down and rebuilt to a typical-style station at some point like we typically have in our other areas.
Do we have another site around the city anywhere that's similar to that site?
Are you talking about?
About volunteer sites?
No, sir. This is the only volunteer department that's inside the City of Huntsville, that's working inside the City of Huntsville.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries.
Thank you.
R is a resolution authorizing lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Green Mountain Volunteer Fire Department, Inc. for the leasing of facilities.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Doc Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. S is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute change order number three and final to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Consolidated Construction Company, Inc. for North Public Safety Complex located at forty-fourteen North Moyles Parkway.
Move to approve.
Motion by Doc Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Mr. O'Neal, could you describe the project and let us know if it was on time and on budget?
Yes, sir. This is the, the North Public Safety Complex, which includes the North Police Precinct. The building is complete. The contractor Consolidated Construction and their subcontractors, they finished the project on time and on budget. This is the third and final change order, the vast majority of it. It was for some additional landscaping sod out front, as well as in the, behind the building and behind the fire station. It also includes the repair and replacement of the fire station number eight driveway. The change order amount is ten thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. O'Neal? Discussion? Doc Showers?
John, the date for the ceremony for opening, what is that date?
Doc Showers, we haven't actually set a date, but, but we should get it out and announced here pretty soon. I think we're, we're a few weeks away from getting them moved in, and then we'll do a ceremony during that process, but we owe you a date.
Could I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Since we own A&amp;M's campus, and we have a unit there, we have a chief and officers on that campus, could you see if they can be involved in our grand opening?
Absolutely. I think that, that's very suitable. In fact, we, you know, the president of the university was involved in the groundbreaking ceremony and played an important role there, so we'll, we'll continue that tradition with the ribbon cutting.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, it carries. T is a resolution declaring Mark Russell elected to the Office of City Council, District Number Two, for the City of Huntsville, Alabama.
Move to approve.
Motion by Doc Showers, second by Mr. Culver. The Chair will abstain for voting. Discussion?
Something to say. I think it's phenomenal. I think it's phenomenal, Mark. We're proud of you on that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Congratulations.
Aye.
The Chair abstains, it passes four to zero. Thank you very much.
Should we bring up a motion for reconsideration and a motion to postpone, or should I just leave it alone?
I prefer you leave it alone.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We're now at legal department item transactions. Sixteen A is vacations at easement. The Chair moves consolidation approval of the seven vacations of easement.
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. All those in favor, consolidation approval of the vacation easements, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We have one deed for acceptance. We have a UND easement from Jeff Ben Development, Inc., acquired six-eighteen two thousand and fourteen. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We're now at non-roster communications from the public. Mr. Cox, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Jerry Cox, forty-twenty-nine Telstar Circle. Cancel, there's a display out in the lobby of this building, I believe from the Office of Multicultural Affairs, that has a section entitled Russia. Given the incident recently in the Ukraine, where it is almost certain that a Russian missile shot down an airliner with tremendous loss of life, it is not only appropriate but necessary that the Russian section be removed from this display. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kling.
Before the meeting does end, I know we have another speaker. I understand we do have a, a boy scout in the audience, and I wanted to ask if we could get him to come to the microphone and put his name in the record as being in attendance.
If you'd like to go to that microphone, please.
Gregory Egley.
Welcome, Gregory. What badge are you working on?
Uh, citizenship in the nation, no, community.
Community? Okay. If we can help you any way, just come see us after the meeting, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Again, welcome. Sir, do you want to speak again?
Yes, sir. I have a third item that I didn't want to confuse with the first two, and do I need to?
If you don't mind, Mr. Foster, yes.
That's James D. Foster, six-five-eighteen Mercator Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, three-five-eight-one-zero. I wanted to speak on street sweeping. I know that we have reduced that in terms of sweeping the streets, and I would just like to ask that, and I spoke to Mr. Hamilton about this, and he's gonna look into it, and I just want everybody else to be aware of it. Street sweeping is, since we have reduced it and we don't have enough equipment to do street sweeping completely, in areas where there are parked cars, I think we should cease and desist sweeping those streets, because what happened is that you sweep the trash from one neighbor, from one neighbor's yard all the way up to where the car is parked, and then the sweeper goes around and leave that there until the next time. And there are some areas where cars are uniquely parked all the time, and, and that just continues to be another area of debris in the neighborhood. And I just think that we should stop until we find a nice way of saying, in this district, during this month, streets will be swept and cars will be moved, otherwise, they will be what? Ticketed. So, we need to do something like that. So, if you're going to sweep a street, it should be like everything else. It should be swept. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, do you wish to speak to council?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak again, and I appreciate the comments that Councilman Kling and Councilman Showers and the mayor made tonight concerning the comments that I made earlier. And what I got from that, during my comments, I said that I was afraid that we had a lack of communication or that we hadn't communicated clearly, and I think from their comments, it verified that suspicion, because from what they said, I got the idea that they thought we were still discussing the height of the fence or the liability issue, and I thought we had worked through all of that. I thought the height of the fence had been settled at, at eight feet, and that both the city and myself were, were agreeable to that, and as far as the liability issue was concerned, I thought that the offer to add the City of Huntsville as an additional insured covered that, because I was under the understanding that the amount that was being discussed was even above what the city carried, and I didn't hear otherwise that that wouldn't cover the city in case of, of an accident. I was under the understanding that that would indeed take care of the liability issue, at least that's what my lawyer had explained to me, and I didn't hear otherwise. So, I thought those issues had been cleared. But again, as I said, from, from hearing the comments that are made tonight, it seems to me that we still don't have a clear understanding, that we're not communicating effectively, that everybody didn't know. If, if Mr. Kling still thought that, that those issues remained, maybe he didn't know when he voted last time that, that that had been resolved. And in my mind, the only thing that was still outstanding, the only thing that we had not reached in agreement on was the one issue about the at-will clause for the revocable part of the license, that it could be revoked at will for no, as opposed to having a good cause stated. So, again, I would like to, to request that, you know, maybe we do need to sit down and just make sure everybody is on the same page and has a clear understanding, because there is a lot at stake. And one final thing, the mayor's comment that it's, it's kind of hard to see the tie between the importance of this fence and the restoration or the survival of Kildare, and I understand that. That's why I think that this communication is necessary. Because if I hadn't, if I didn't know the whole picture and know the whole story and understand the layout of the property and what's gone up there and the history and the history of how the neighborhood was laid out, I wouldn't understand it either. And it's not a simple thing to understand. It's not something that can be covered in the three minutes that are available at a city council meeting. I don't even know if three hours would discuss it. You know, it, on the outset, it looks like, you know, this is such a simple issue, it's just we're talking about a fence, but there are so many aspects to this, so many facets to it, which, which remove it far from being a simple issue.